Rose, we can do something about that.
I see.
You guys won't be able to pass the meeting if you don't have a board. Main school management would allow us to do it this way. I mean, they can participate?
Yeah.
But we'll just, we'll just do it another time. It's okay. You guys can give your tentative approval or whatever.
So are you the ones who are no more?
Hey, Louis, can you hear me? Always looking at the bright side.
Hello there.
Yep, I told them, yep.
We can do.
We can say you have our support.
Right.
Formality.
Someone to get back.
Um, it's okay. I mean, you can if you want. She said, call me if you, if you need me to go.
And she's watching.
So it is six thirty. I think we have all the board members that we're going to have here. Madawaska will not have a forum just because we do have some of the board members that, that it was recommended they are not in, in this setting, which we understand completely. So we're, we're going to have a follow-up vote when we're in a smaller group setting as a, as a committee, which it's not a problem. We can still continue. But I'll ask for chairman of thirty-three boards to call their meeting to order. If you can do that, Louis.
Okay. Call the SAB twenty-seven school board meeting to order.
And I'll have the vice chair of the SAB twenty-seven board to call their meeting to order.
Call the SAB twenty-seven board meeting to order.
Right, thank you. So thank you all for, for agreeing to be here tonight. Part of the reason that we are here and you have your agendas is because we do have to have your approval of, of what they're calling a, a remote learning plan. So we wanted to make sure that while we're getting your approval, hopefully your approval for that, we'd also present you with some information of what's been happening in the last twenty-four, forty-eight, and so on and so forth, because it's, it's been changing and elevating and escalating quite rapidly over the, over the past weekend. Just to give you a snapshot of, of what the weekend was like, superintendents met in Presque Isle on, on Saturday afternoon. We agreed as a region that we would make decisions as a region, just in strength of numbers. At that time, we had left that meeting deciding that we were probably going to try to stick out this week of school for, for preparation purposes. On, on Saturday night, there were other regions that had similar meetings, and they made determinations Saturday night that they were going to be canceling school. That word got to us Sunday morning, and we felt, we felt as if being a region that's holding the line when the rest of the state is making determinations, we didn't feel quite confident that was the best, that was the best way to move forward. And the commission, the governor followed suit after we all made those announcements and did declare her state of emergency. So, you know, schools are being recommended to be closed anyway, so we knew that we were right in line with, with the decision-making process. I tried to get notice to all of you out first, before we, we pulled the plug, and so I did send an email to you. I, I, we were, we were, we were playing phone tag beyond control all day yesterday. So I, I apologize for not taking the time to pick up the phone and call each of you. I am collecting cellphone numbers, so I can start a, a cellphone group for, for board members, so that I can quickly get that out to you. So before the meeting ends, if I don't have your cellphone number, if you could get me it, if you have one, that would be great. But I did put together our plan, and I'm hoping that you find that the work that we've done literally over the past forty-eight hours is, I mean, we had some preliminary stuff going on last week when we were getting ready for it, but it was full steam ahead this past weekend. So we hope that this information is, is useful. Our plan is, is a four-part plan, starting with our remote learning plan, moving to our school lunch plan, our staff work plan, and then the final piece of it is our school-based service and facility access portion of it. We want to make sure that we're, we're taking care of, of every aspect of this plan. And I just, I'm trying to remind staff, and I'm trying to remind you all that school closure is not about locking down schools, all right? Our schools are not locked down. So if you need to access the schools as community members, you can, especially if your students need something, if they need a service, if they need a book in their, in their desk, if they need something out of their locker, the school is not on lockdown. The reason that we've started, we've closed down schools is for group gatherings, you know, and that's based on the CDC recommendations. Right now, it's at fifty, fifty or, or, or less people for, for groups, except for the, the neediest population. They're saying ten, ten or less. So we want to make sure that we're following that. So schools are not on lockdown. We're not running for the hills because kids are coming. That's not what it's about. It's, it's about keeping our kids safe, keeping our, our faculty state, safe, and making sure that we're still running the business, right? So we, we still have to answer phones, we still have to pay bills, we still have to do all of those things. So that's important that we understand that. So part one of our plan is the remote learning plan, and this will be the specific piece that you will hopefully approve. The remote learning plan is our effort to show that we're doing our best to provide instruction or enrichment to learners while they're not in school. This is not like summer vacation where we're saying, see ya, see you later, and, and take care. We're making valid efforts to connect with kids, to make sure that we're, we're, you know, holding them accountable to their learning as best we can, and we're, we're trying as best we can to do that. So I just want to summarize the plan for you. This is a three-phase plan. I'm going to go over here so I can go and quickly turn around to read. While we understand that remote learning can never take, or never replace or be as effective as being in school, we hope that the learners will make every effort to connect with their teachers and participate in the learning opportunities from home. So it's a, it's a three-phase plan. Phase one is this week, and we're calling that the work extension phase of the plan. Essentially, what's going on this week is we're asking teachers to collect materials, send materials to the learners that are extensions of what they were doing this past week while they were in school. So there are some, some, you know, math lessons to finish up, there are some art projects to finish up, there are some books that need to be finished reading. It's, it's extending what was being done this past week so that it's not a, a, a break-off from last Friday. So we're trying to do our best to make sure that that is an ongoing extension of what was happening this past week. When we move to phase two, that's going to be a two-week phase, and we're anticipating that from March twenty-three to April three. If we go back in session, it's going to go back, be back in phase two. Right now, we're on a two-week, two-week break. So we would be going back at the end of the first week of phase two. Phase two is an enrichment plan. So it's not new instruction from the teachers. It can be a lot of suggestions from the teachers. Hey, try out this webpage. Hey, read this book. Hey, write this journal entry. It's a lot of suggestive things that they know that your learners can do and to help enrich them, you know? So it's creating, you know, a, a freckle pathway so that they can go log into their freckle account and go, go do that work. It's, it's, it's enriching, enriching their, their own things. You can highly expect as parents, they get a lot of suggestions. Hey, try these, you know, science experiments from home, make a mess with your kids. Or, or hey, try these, you know, even our physical education teachers are, are working on remote plans or he at home. So that phase two, it's all about enriching so that they're not losing any step from where they've been again. This is not summer vacation. When we move into, excuse me, phase three, that's where we're going to start looking at remote instruction. And that's going to be, that's going to be very scary and very weird because we don't know how well that's going to work, we don't know the success rate of that, and we are in the same boat as every other school in the nation right now with, we're going to try this remote thing, we're going to see how we do this, and we're going to see how, how well it is. Our plan is very specific to teacher voice choice, so we're not prescribing a set way to do that. We're not saying all teachers shall use Google Classroom, or all teachers shall use this communication method. We want the teachers to have voice choices based on their comfort level so that they have, they have a way to do that. And the remote instruction is not all technology-based. We want paper packets going home, we want materials, we want kids not sitting in front of a screen only. We want that to be a blend of, of different types of learning experiences. So a three-phase plan, and that goes beyond April sixth, and, and we don't know how long that will be beyond there. Questions about the three phases? You're all such a good class. Uh, the, the components of, 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 of the plan are based on, on the teachers creating these components. The first component of the plan is a teacher-student communication component. So the teacher is going to make an effort, that's what they worked on today, is how are they going to communicate with your kiddos, with our kiddos? How are they going to make sure that they're touching base? Obviously, email might be a go-to thing to start, but there are a lot, especially at the elementary levels, of, of apps that the teachers are using, like Blooms and, and, and I think Class Dojo and a lot of these other things where parents are already, you know, sending messages to them. It might even be text me at my cell number. It might be that, if that's what's a comfort level for that teacher and they're comfortable with that, that's fine. I know we had teachers today working on Snapchat groups. So they've created Snapchat groups for their, for their group of learners. They've invited all of their learners to the group, and now the teacher can send a Snapchat, maybe with a funny photo, maybe with a TikTok, I don't know, and then send some instruction with that. So it's going to be the teacher's preferred method based on who their learners are and what they know their learners are able to do. And then always considering that when we get to the, to the phase three, we're going to have to use some kind of method to really have a way to, to, to provide instruction. So that might be a Google Hangouts video chat, it might be a Zoom meeting video, it might be I'm recording myself doing a lesson, I'm sending you a link to that video recording, or I'm posting it to YouTube, I want you to watch my lesson, and I want you to do X, Y, and Z. It might be a PowerPoint presentation that I'm going to voice over narrative, and you're going to watch it, and then you're going to, you know, go deliver on that. So the teacher communication, teacher, student communication piece of it is the first aspect. Note on the bottom there that we want our teachers, that our expectation with the teachers is they are able to be connected with their learners from eight to two-thirty each day. We want them to be available. So we're asking teachers, you know, you're not going to have vacation unless you're taking a personal day, or your personal days, you are able to be reached. You know, we want a kiddo sending an email to a teacher between eight and two-thirty, and they're getting a reply. We're sending that message, we're getting a reply, because that's part of our responsibility with this. Planning component number two is the learner resources and expectations. So we're, we're very clear that we want a blend of non-technology ideas and full-technology ideas. We have to have the blend of that, and we're all aware that some kiddos are not going to have technology. So for those, we're going to be, we're going to be reaching out to these families, and we're going to be giving them some, some, some information that we have. Spectrum right now is offering free internet for fam, for kids in school for the next, I think, sixty days. That's a, that's a deal right now from Spectrum. So we're, we're going to reach out to some of these families and see if some of these solutions can work. We'll also look at possibly working with, we currently use KJET systems for our buses. There are some KJET Wi-Fi hotspots that maybe we can use for some people who don't have connectivity with Spectrum because they live in a certain region. So we're going to look at those things to see if we can, we can help with that. So a blend of non-technology and full-technology resources are going to be part of the plan. Collection of work evidence. We want a return on what the students are doing. That might be a portfolio that the teacher has expected them, hey, everything that you do, put it in a folder, put it in a folder. Have a math folder, have an English folder, have a reading folder. It might be a physical folder, or it might be digital folders. Drag that to your Google Drive, download it to your Empower locker, whatever. Take a picture with mom's cellphone or dad's cellphone and email me that, that, what you did. Whatever evidence the teacher wants to collect, they're going to establish that, that evidence collection. Or it might be every Friday, ask mom to come drop it off at school. It might be something as simple as that. So that's going to be based on what the teacher, what the teacher decides on, on their level. And then the fourth component for this is when we get to phase three, what is that, what is that distance learning going to look like? And it might be I will be hosting a Zoom meeting, it might be I'll have a Facebook livestream for my class or the examples that I used a while ago. What we're going to be doing in the next three weeks is providing a lot of professional development to our teachers around these different opportunities. We're not buying anything new. We're not trying anything, we're not going to go get, you know, Blackboard because that's what the University of Maine system uses. We already have some of our own solutions. We just need to help our teachers get comfortable with it and be able to, to explore it. So that's what we're going to be doing in the next three weeks while we prepare for these three. Any questions about the four components of the plan? I shared this with colleagues in, in the Ruska County meeting, and I know some other schools have looked to take some of these ideas as well. There was a lot of positive feedback with the three-phase approach rather than switch on and go and tag your it type, type thing. I think it put a lot of teachers' minds at ease that we're easing into this phase three, which is the real, which is going to be the real challenging part of, of what we're doing. Some schools have said, no instruction for two weeks, we'll talk to you in two weeks. I, I didn't want to go there as well. I don't think it would be fair to our learners to say, we're not doing anything for two weeks, we'll connect with you then. I think we owe it to them now to provide something. Distance instruction access to technology. We know that it's going to be a challenge for some learners, as I mentioned a while ago, to have access to it. So there are some surveys that are going around right now. Student surveys had already gone out prior to, to this, so I know students had taken a survey. Staff have taken a survey, and there are parent surveys that are going out or have gone out with regards to, with regards to what kind of access to technology our people have. We do have a technology-rich region. We don't have a lot of families that don't have access, but we do have some. We want to make sure that we're using this survey to determine that because a family might have internet, they might have, you know, a, a, a home device, but they might have four kids with one home device. Problem, okay? That's a problem. We, we're going to need to address those type of problems. So we've created a temporary school device take-home program that's going to be going out to the families soon. And I know it has already been offered to those who are asking, where we are allowing the device the student uses in their classroom to be signed out and go home. We realize that there might be all kinds of complications with that, but I think the, the, the risk is worth the try. I think having those learners want the devices and, and having, you know, on the form, it does talk about responsibility and it's a parent's responsibility to make sure that, you know, student doesn't have liquid around it, yada, yada, yada. And, and ultimately, it's the parents' responsibility to replace the damaged device. Now, we'll work with folks if that ever happens, but we want to make sure that technology was not a barrier. So we will be allowing that. I know some, some devices are going out as soon as this afternoon or tomorrow. So that's, that's ongoing as we go. Information on Spectrum free internet offer. We're going to be sharing that with families who need it. Secure access to video conferencing platforms. Zoom, which is the, the platform we're using right now to connect with a couple of board members in Madawaska. Zoom put out free accounts for teachers and schools during this, this pandemic, so now we don't have to buy Zoom accounts. We have free classroom accounts through Zoom, which is wonderful, and then we can open up our Google Hangouts to do the same, similar type of thing. And then I did mention the staff training is going to be going on. Sharon Shasi has already begun working on a website that's going to put all of those PD opportunities available to teachers over the next three weeks so that we can get them trained in some of these, these different, these different platforms. Distance instruction access to physical materials. So again, it's a two-phase approach. It's not just the technology, it's books, it's, it's, it's packets, it's worksheets, it's workbooks, it's magazines, it's all of that. So, you know, we, we are making sure that in addition to all of those technology things, and, and I didn't update my bullets at the bottom there, so I apologize, but we're also, we're going to be delivering, you're going to hear for our school lunch program in a bit, we're going to be delivering materials door-to-door with our school buses over the next few days. Teachers are preparing packets right now of stuff, and those things will be available for parents to pick up by appointment, or we will be delivering them right to every household in Val Unified, including the tuition communities. So we're not excluding them in any part of this plan. Which takes us to part two, which is the school lunch plan. I think I heard on the news today something like twenty-two million children in America depend on the National School Lunch Program. We have a lot of learners that depend on the lunch program. We want to make sure that they have access to that program as well. So the meal plan is actually an extension of the summer meal program. So all lunches are served, will be fully reimbursable by the, by the federal government. The plan will begin tomorrow, so we're actually starting our lunch plan tomorrow. What we will be doing is we are putting bag lunches in coolers, separating hot and cold. We're going to every door, knocking on every door, using our educational technicians, using our kitchen staff, using anybody who wants to volunteer. We're going to fill up buses. We're going to head out on each bus route in Val Unified. So Benny Netto will head out on his route, and, and Gil Seer will head out on his route. So every bus driver will head out on their route with their list of where the students live. It will also include students who do not attend school in their own district but live in that district. So if you have a superintendent's agreement, you live in Madawaska but you attend school in Dr. Lavak, no worries, you're on the list. And we're going to knock on doors and say, do you want the, the, the school lunch program? The school lunch is available to any child who lives in that household, ages, ages.
Eighteen.
Eating real food to eighteen. So if, if we go to a household, they say, yeah, I want five, we're giving them five. Yeah, I want, you know, three, we're giving them three. If they say, no, thank you, we're going to tell them we're not coming back tomorrow, so call us if you want to reinstate the lunch program. Okay? They're going to be families say, no, we're all set. That's fine. We're not going to stop there every day. We're going to do that day one, maybe day one and two if we miss a couple of folks, but after that, we're just going to hit the households that need it and want it. In that lunch program, you're going to have today's lunch, tomorrow's breakfast. So you're always going to have today's lunch, tomorrow's breakfast, so you'll always have the lunch and the breakfast in that same delivery. And you might have work from school as well. So it might be a pretty substantial package that's being delivered at your house. Again, we're, we're, tomorrow, we know it's going to be a lot of work, but it's worth figuring out who needs these lunches. We don't want any kid going hungry. So site locations, we also have site locations for, for those people who live in the proximity of a school that want to walk over and pick it up. We determined that Madawaska Middle High School will be one for Kent Community High School. We did not make one for, for Frontal St. Agatha because there's not a lot of walking residents around any of the schools. So in Frontal St. Agatha, it'll just be bus delivery. With Madawaska, you have quite a bit of, of learners that live right around that block, and the same thing with Fort Kent Community High School that live on Pleasant Street. If, if nobody is going to the site locations, we'll shut it down after a week or so. But if we see that we have some trickling in that way, we'll keep it open from eleven to twelve daily so people can go pick up their lunch right at school. Again, I said kitchen staff and ed techs will be used to prepare and deliver the meals. And we're ready to go tomorrow. Part three of this is our staff work plan. So what are our staff going to be doing while schools are closed? This is assuming that we don't go into a statewide lockdown. If we go into a statewide lockdown, we may have to reassess the, the staff work pieces. Right now, this is based on today. Tomorrow will be a new day, and I'm sure things will change tomorrow. So this is based on today and the guidance we have today. Our expectation is no employee is harmed by this school closure. We don't want anyone losing work, losing hours. We don't want anyone going without because they, because school is closed. So making sure that everybody has work and everybody is getting their, their bi-weekly paychecks is, is number one priority for us. Our staff responsibility expectations, our secretaries and central office, listen, business as usual. Okay? We still have bills to pay, we still have phones to answer, we still have tons of work. So secretary, central office expectation is, hey, just go to work and, and, and social distance yourself. So make sure that we're, we're keeping that six feet and, and not shaking hands and all, all those good things. Guidance, social work and therapists, the expectation for these employees is to plant, make plans to connect with learners on their caseload to support the various needs as best they can. So these are professionals, they know what, who their kids are that need OTPT speech, you know, type counseling, all of these things. So these individuals will reach out to these families and provide as necessary. So we're, we're going to make sure that these services continue to happen as best that we can. We may have some families that say, no, we're all set, and that's the best we can do, but there's still a lot of work that needs to be done, paperwork and, and schedule plans for next year. And so there's plenty of work there for these folks to support that, that aspect of their jobs. Custodian bus drivers, we mentioned the delivery to homes, so we're going to be using them for that. And then we're going to be disinfecting our buildings a lot, and I told the custodial staff today that this is project time. What are some projects that have been, you've been waiting for, for a two-week lull that have been put on the back burner? You know, we, we have the one-week breaks that happen, you know, throughout the year. It's not quite enough time. Two-week break, I know that at Fort Kent Elementary, we're replacing a water heater. So we're going to put projects to use and make sure that we're using that time as well. So yeah, so those, those projects will be going as, as well. School nurses are going to be assisting in the coordination of health and safety activities. They're going to be checking in with families on a regular basis, how are your kids doing? How are they feeling? Did you go to the doctor if they're feeling this way? Or did you call your doctor, excuse me, doc, doc, did you go to the doctor, but did you call your doctor and let them know? Touching base, also checking in with staff, checking in with staff at work, how they're feeling, how they're doing, not only their physical, uh, physical well-being, but their mental well-being, and making sure that we're, we're checking in with them as well. Our administrators, directors, and coordinators, work as usual. I'll be at, I'll be at work. I'll be floating between the three districts, and, and so will the rest of our, our administrators and coordinators. IT staff, they're still going to be needed. They're going to have to support a lot of learners from distance technology, right? So there's going to be a lot of questions coming from our students coming from our students about, "My iPad's doing this, and my laptop's doing this," or "It's not doing this." IT staff will will be available. If a student needs to come in and have something downloaded or repaired, our IT staff will be there for that. Kitchen staff will be needed for our breakfast and lunch programs. Um and and our ed techs, we're the biggest question mark because ed techs specifically work one-on-one with students or support what the teacher's doing in the classroom, that's gone, right? There's no students. So we're gonna use our ed techs in a variety of ways, from school lunch preparation, lunch delivery, um student work prep, uh student work delivery, classroom cleaning projects, uh possible tutoring services, you know, for IEP learners or Title I learners. So everyone's gonna have work. Everyone's gonna have work, and we're gonna make sure. And 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 everyone was met with today, the ed techs, and and they were told, "You're you're fine, your job is..." Because that's a lot of concern for a lot of them is, you know, am I gonna get laid off for the next two weeks? We want to assure that there's plenty of work to do. Um just with the lunch program alone, we're gonna we're gonna have to divide and conquer. And then with our teaching staff and learning facilitators, um we're we're really working with them to implement that phase one, two and three plan uh while students are not attending school. We have to remember that a teacher's primary responsibility is to educate kids. When there are no kids physically present to educate, that becomes a whole new world. How do you educate kids who are not there? So we're gonna really be working with our teachers about that availability window. Um when we get to phase three, a lot of teachers have talked about having office hours. So this is my period one office hour, where you can call me or video chat me, and I'll, you know, I'll give you that instruction. Um so working with a lot of different things like that. Uh and then we have to remember that at that bottom paragraph, we have kids with IEPs, they have Title I services, they have student support team services. We're gonna have to continue to provide those, you know? We can't say to IEP learners, "Good luck, we'll see you when we see you." If new instruction is going out, their IEPs say they have to have assistance with that. So we've gotta work on what that looks like from this distance model. And if it's bringing in small groups of kids, one or two at a time, to make sure they're supported that way, we're gonna we're gonna do that. Uh again, we're we're it's not it's not a fear of kids, it's a fear of large group of people together. So it's perfectly fine to bring small groups of chi- of children in for services as they need it. And then this brings me to the final part of the plan, which is the school-based service and uh facility access. Um our schools will still be public buildings that are accessible to the public, but very limited access. And this is going to be, uh you know, some of the things we're gonna be using our facilities for, special education services, and that's to be determined, especially in phase three. Therapy sessions, speech OTPT, I know these folks were looking at distance models and how that works, and if that can even work. So they're already looking at that. Counseling sessions, Title I AS services, teacher access to help tutoring, et cetera, IT support, the meal program, the backpack program where those are available. These are all things that we want to continue in our schools as the students are not there. And then, uh you know, in addition to just regular business as usual. And then our access to facility, uh we're really trying to remind folks that we don't want large group gatherings at our schools. Um we're trying to limit that to to ten individuals or less uh with with regards to any of the access to the building. We're not allowing for driver's ed classes, we're not allowing for the judo classes, we're not allowing for any of those events to happen in our school. And I know that's going to be difficult for those people who access it, but we just can't. AYBL is not gonna be having basketball practice, and we're just not using our schools that way. Um public access to the building is by appointment only or by stopping in the main office to inquire. Uh and then from there, we're just, you know, we're it's our staff that are going in and out. Um it's our staff and the majority of the people that are accessing that building, those buildings. Today, we did have a a collaborative group meeting um of various stakeholders to talk about our uh our emergency preparation um programs. It was specific to a a crisis, a pandemic crisis, uh and it was facilitated by, as you can see Peter, he's talking right there in the middle. It was facilitated by Peter, so I'm gonna let him update you on what happened today. Peter.
Uh today was the result of about a week's worth of reflection and information gathering on the part of about thirty people from um healthcare entities as well as emergency responder services, uh and people from all parts of the Valley Unified Education Service Center and each of its ELAs. We had school nurses with us. Uh we also had our technology coordinators, building administrators. And what we did, what we spent a week reflecting on was a thirty-three item checklist prescribed by both the United States Department of Education and the United States Department of Health and Human Services as a planning checklist uh to assess your readiness uh and your ability to respond effectively to a pandemic as educational entities and healthcare and emergency uh response providers. So today, we got together in our groups, uh all of the thinking and all the information gathering that we did. We, for each of those items, identified what pieces are in place, what needs to be done, and we assessed them on a three-point scale. Either we had not started or um it was in progress or it was completed. I'm pleased to tell you, there isn't a single item on that thirty-three point checklist uh that has not been started, and there are a number, I think it's six or seven, that were complete. And of the ones that are in progress, it's really because we've put them back in play as we evaluated our local um emergency action plans. We noticed that there were some things that needed to be addressed, tightened, maybe consolidated and centralized into one location. That's gonna be ongoing work done by school safety committees. But a lot of other items uh were kept coming up across the four areas of planning and coordination, continuity of student learning, uh infection control policies and procedures, and communications planning. Uh and many of them will be done by the end of this week. They're very quick fixes, and by the end of next week, we'll have the other pieces done. So really, the only thing that's going to linger uh into a month's-long endeavor will be reviewing the emergency action plans and specifically the pandemic response sections of those plans. Uh but in the meantime, we're in good shape, uh and we know what our partners can do, they know what we're capable of doing. Um and we expect that the safety committees um will be able to use that information in strengthening each um local educational, each local school units and schools' emergency action plans.
Thank you, Peter. And I know a lot of you, Giselle, I'll get the gears off, I'll go back on. A lot of you have reached out to me, either personally messaged me and staff have as well, and you know, and have thanked all the work that, you know, that has been going on, um but have specifically addressed me and say, "How are you doing it?" The reason I'm doing it is because of Peter, because of Giselle, because of the team we have. When 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 things started to go down yesterday, these are the first two people I called, and then this went Lucy, and we started triaging, "What are we doing? How are we doing it?" And because of the team that we had, we were able to get everything in order in such a quick amount of time and get things in place. Um when I met with the pre- with the superintendents in Prescal, I mean, it was like just in awe of what we had done in such a short amount of time. And we're gonna be re-meeting with with that group, um either digitally or or physically later this week, because that has become a network as well. All the superintendents are now working together, sharing ideas, sharing plans. We're all in this together. And I think the more that we do that, the more that we we share that load, um like we're sharing the load here with three districts. Um it's it's a way to get things done efficiently, it's a way to get things done the right way, uh because one superintendent dealing with all of this, you know, I I spoke with Lisa on her way out, she said, "If this was last year, I don't know what I would have done," you know? And then that's because it's a lot, it's a lot to deal with with one person making decisions. Uh when you have a team approach, it's it's very, very appropriate. Uh so that is our plan. Um and and you need to know that the plan may change tomorrow. Uh the plan may change, you know, two days from now because of of decisions that haven't have been made, um and and the term the determinations are now guiding us into a different area. But I think in looking at other plans, I know they shared a bunch of these plans on um Main Principles Association, ours is there as well. Um we've got a good plan. We've got a good plan, and a lot of questions from teachers today, a lot of questions from from our staff members about, "Well, what does this mean? What does this mean?" And I think, you know, we were able to provide enough, enough to say, "Listen, guys, this is this is where we're starting from. It's not gonna be a hundred percent, we know that. Um so don't strive for perfection, because there's no way this is gonna is gonna reach every every child, and it's gonna be a hundred percent foolproof foolproof." We do have a plan, though. After a week of of, you know, for so this this initial week, we contacted or made attempts to contact every learner in our class. We're asking each teacher to provide us with a list of those learners who did not reply to their email, did not reply to their Snapchat or their their text or whatever. And we're gonna go door-to-door again and 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 say, "Listen, you're still a student. You're still a student while this is happening. And yes, it looks different, but we need you to be accountable, because we wanna make sure we're not losing our kids, and we're we're trying to hold on as best that we can." So in your consideration of approving this plan, I also have another ask. Uh I'd also ask that you also, in your motion to approve, if you so choose, that you also allow us to adjust the calendar uh as need be, because we may have, you know, to adjust April break as an example, or the end of the school year, or that final workshop day that was here, now putting it here, because we still have to be accountable to the one-hundred-and-seventy-eight student days, even if it's a part of the remote plan. Um that's all part of the student days that are part of that calendar. And having some flexibility to adjust the calendar based on uh things that are happening, things that have occurred, without having to go to each board for approval in each step. If I can get your pre-approval now, um that would be very helpful. I promise you, I won't do anything drastic. Uh and I'll notify you of every change before we make it happen. Any questions or-
The the motions, do you want two motions or just-
I think you can motion to approve the uh the remote learning plan and any calendar revisions. I think you can put that in one in one uh motion. But I want to answer your questions if you have that, if you have any, Julie.
So like the 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 calendar change that you you just said, maybe I misunderstood you, but during this period of time, the teachers and the ed techs and everybody are are fully responsible for for working and and doing their days. So are you saying that we would add additional days on top of the work that they're doing?
No, these are school days.
Okay.
Today was a school day.
Okay.
Uh actually, I take that back. Today was a workshop day, which I might wanna go grab that last workshop day and go plug it in for today, because it wasn't a student day. Students didn't have access to anything today. Tomorrow will be the beginning of student workdays, because we're gonna be delivering materials. So tomorrow's a school day. Uh that means we don't have to make that up in late June or July with your approval of this plan. We are making up the school days as remote days. Um and and this will carry over in the future. Uh if we do this well and we have success with it, and we're gonna get we're gonna get data all over the all over the, you know, all over the map with this, this might be the future of our snow days. You know, if this works for this, this might be our snow day plan. So we have remote days on snow days, so that we're not making them up. Uh so this is our is our um on-the-boots, running, right-away trial to something that we knew we were gonna get to eventually. Just now, it's, "Hey, you're in it, so so go for it." Um yeah, so these are these are actual school days.
So because you see this, your plan going more than two weeks, your plan is laid out for four weeks. I know school announcement closures was was for two. So because of your forecasting, it's lasting more than two, this is why we're doing this versus, say, closing and making up two weeks of education during April break or extending into June.
Correct.
So this was the path.
Yeah.
So you you mentioned a school district that's closing for two weeks and saying, "Hey, we'll see you in two weeks."
They're gonna have they're gonna have to make up those two weeks.
Their plan is to make up two weeks later on versus-
Yeah. Um I'm gonna be, you know, I'm just gonna level with all of you. I don't believe this is gonna be a two-week thing, and that it's all over. So I think it's, you know, we'd be doing the right thing by planning ahead, planning accordingly, getting our teachers the the resources and education they need to phase into that phase three model as soon as possible. I think that's gonna be our reality for quite a while. Unfortunately.
What is going on site? Are the health uh students, health nurses, are they doing screening?
Yeah. We're gonna be asking any students who have, so they have to come by appointment. They have to schedule an appointment with their teacher. And then at that point, um the teacher's gonna notify the nurse that such and such is coming at this time, and then we're gonna be screening um on their-
Right. Do you have bus services? You talked about IEP, you talked about special needs, occupational therapy, PT, speech.
Yeah.
Are you providing a bus for students?
We're gonna offer transportation for those who need it, uh be it the buses or um school vans. If it's one kid, it might be a school van. Uh if it's two or three, we we may use a bus. We don't want transportation to be a barrier to services. Yeah, keep going.
You say you're gonna use the custodians and whatnot to deliver lunches. Is there gonna be any contact with the families, because there's potential to transmit uh contact with the staff, also, there could be an issue there where they're transmitting from one household to another.
Yeah. So the only uh the only contact we're having with the household is tomorrow, when we're knocking on doors saying, "Do you want lunch?" Uh after that, the expectation will be that the student's coming out to the bus to get get handed their meal right off the bus. So we're not um we're not exposing staff other than handing that meal outside the the door of the bus. Other than that, there's no other, there's no other further exposure than that. We don't want the food delivery to take four hours, because by the time they get to the furthest points of our region, I mean, it's gonna be supper time.
Nor do we anticipate that they'll be entering the residence and and you know, those contact could be more a knock on the door, a step back. You have lunches, do you want them? I mean, do you eat? And then it'll be-
That tomorrow will be the trickiest day. It'll it's gonna take us long. And then the next couple of days, we'll establish our real timeframe and timeline for delivery.
So what about the children that are not home and at daycare, because the parents are at work, attending the school lunch drop-off delivery program?
Yeah. So we'll we'll deliver to the the daycare.
Okay. So but do you know potentially, like-
We have the list of where kids typically go to daycare or where they go for babysitters. We have all that information. I don't know if we're at that level yet. I think, you know, right now, it's gonna be a little bit of homes, and then we'll find out shortly um who's not at, and then I plan accordingly there.
And we're probably not gonna get everyone on day one. I mean, there're gonna be, there're gonna be some misses and lapses, but we're gonna look at correcting that very shortly.
Yeah. So at four o'clock today, the school lunch notice went out on our school reach. It's on all of our web pages. Um right now, that that specific plan, tonight, you can probably expect another letter to go out to kind of summarize this plan if you approve it. The actual plan that I just presented to you, the slides are gonna go out as well and be posted on the website. We wanna be as transparent and ahead of this as possible. Um it might be overkill to to, you know, send all this information, but I think power, you know, information is is the power that that people need, and the more we can get that out there, the better. So the more you can share anything you're seeing on Facebook that we're sending out, please share, please share, and 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 make sure that stuff is getting out there. And as board members, you may have community members saying, "We're not getting the school lunch. Let us know." If they're not getting it because they're here instead of here, we need to know that, um so that we can we can correct as soon as possible.
Um so this survey about internet to parents-
Yeah.
That go out yet or-
I I believe it did in some schools, but not all yet.
I didn't get it.
Yeah.
It's an issue for us at our house.
Yeah. So that survey will be will be going out. Uh but you can you can be preact- proactive right now, and if you wanna call your child's school and let them know you need technology devices, you already know that, you don't need to wait for a survey to do that. Contact the school, and they'll make arrangements to send you the permission form, and we'll get you lined up.
It's also a-
Connectivity.
Internet connectivity issue, yes. Because we don't have spectrum on our road, not available. So I only have FairPoint, and it bogs down weird. It does not-
The survey will be going out to parents, and if you can fill out the survey, it will help us determine how we're gonna address some of these issues in their plan. So when you do put the survey, please be honest about it. Um there's a place where you can include other, and you can add additional information. I do know that twenty-seven in Madawaska, can't speak for thirty-three, the survey has gone out to parents as well as staff. Um so, or students rather, so I don't know about thirty-three.
We'll double-check on that. We'll double-check on that tomorrow. We'll double-check on your survey and where that status of that is. Uh but it might be a solution for you where you have, you know, multiple kiddos wanting to access. It might be staggering because of your level of connectivity at home.
Even then, though, like even streaming stuff is really rough.
Yeah. And that's gonna be part of the part of the communicating with teachers, you know, let them know, "Hey, the technology stuff's not working for my kiddos. Can I get more hands-on stuff?" And then that's perfectly fine as well.
And if a parent and a couple of children wanna come to the school library-
Right.
They can go.
Yeah.
And they can access our inter-
Yeah.
For any school building, for that matter.
Uh you mentioned test cases. Where are there the capacity for testing? What I know to make to be a test data?
Testing for the virus.
Right.
Um I don't have specifics. I don't have specifics. They have begun, maybe Giselle can speak to that.
We have an update meeting tomorrow, so we'll know. But can't tell you right now.
All I know.
I mean, until we allow people into the school, we should allow them to the school until we have the capacity to do that.
We can't test everybody. If they don't show symptoms, the advice is we're not testing.
So do you have a screening tool?
We do have a screening tool that the nurse in SAV thirty-three has put together. So, you know, the advice we're getting is from CDC, main CDC, national CDC. But everybody cannot be tested at this point. Not everybody can be tested.
You have to go through the screening process first and if you flag within that, then you can.
You flag and then you go to your health provider and then they, they determine.
Anything else?
Well, the kids that come here welding car pretty well.
So the, the staff here met, is Kevin here? Kevin, go ahead.
We met and we're looking to provide currently some paperwork for them to do, some worksheets, as well as utilize Zoom or Google Classroom or any other modality. We are also looking to have them in small cohorts come and do some welding projects and for hard trades because we do have, we do a lot of certification type work. So we will think about the element too.
It's not going to be perfect and I, I'm not going to stand here and tell you this is going to work great. I wouldn't be lying to you if I would say that. I think it's going to be a lot of trial and error. It's going to be a lot of adjustment and readjustment. But I can tell you that what we've done in such a short amount of time is a, is a, is a really solid plan that has the support of our staff. And, and I think that, that in itself is worth its weight in gold because the staff believe that we're going to continue to listen to them and adjust accordingly based on what's working and what's not working, as well as the parents. We're going to continue to, you know, keep our ears open for that as well.
Yeah, because I mean, component three and component four for elementary age students seem kind of challenging to manage.
Yep. And, and, you know, we're, we were having those, those conversations with our, with our cohorts of teachers today, you know? The conversations at pre-K are very different than the conversations at grade twelve of, of expectations, you know? A lot of, a lot of those pre-K expectations are going to be enrichment even into phase three where we just want our kids to continue, you know, sorting and, and doing all these, these things that continue to expand their brains, to expect a four-year-old to connect on Zoom and, you know, tell their teacher what, you know, what they're doing right now. I don't know how realistic. You will have some parents that are going to engage in that and, and will do so successfully. There are some great, there are some great, great apps for teachers that they're using. One of them is Blooms that is unbelievable where, you know, you can, not, not only are you chatting with your, your teacher as a parent, but now you can video chat and now you can send work evidence and now you can, you know, shoot an email message. You can do that all from that one app and it makes things a little easier than, than ever. And let's not take for granted what some of these kids can do, even at five, six, seven years old. They can get on that iPad, they can do something and they're going to know how to get that to, to the teacher, even if we don't think they can. Some of them are pretty savvy with that, so.
And that's part of the plan too, is those teachers who are using those apps at that level will provide some professional development for other teachers who aren't yet using them, but can see the value in, in employing those if we have to extend beyond the two-week period.
We are about to see why we have invested so much in technology in these districts over the past twenty years. It's going to come realistic really fast because you had some teachers today didn't even blink at this expectation or like, oh, yeah, I got this. I mean, some of them were, are ready for the challenge, they're excited. I mean, I got home for lunch and my kids had already connected with two teachers on Snapchat groups and they thought that was the coolest thing ever, coolest thing ever, you know? Some of these teachers have it. The teachers that are not quite ready, we're going to get them there and, and it's okay. They're the ones that are prepping a lot of hands-on activities, which is wonderful as well. You know, we want to make sure that we're blending both worlds together and, and not, the expectation is every kid behind a screen for X amount of hours. We're going to be asking teachers to keep reminding their, their students that it's just about routine. It doesn't have to be the same routine, but it should be a routine. So build in your day some time for math, build in your day some time for reading, build in your day some time for physical activity and, and then we'll work from there. Part of that is going to be, you know, the support we get from parents to, to do that. But, you know, I think, I think if we can, if we can hit a, a majority or close to a majority, I mean, we've done a pretty good job.
Real quickly, where are we for providing emotional support for parents who are at home with these kids?
Yep.
For certain periods of time, are we actively reaching out to them to say, are you, are you feeling crazy?
So that was part of the conversations that our, our guidance and social work group had today around making sure we're reaching out to, to families that we already know are, are, are already on our radar, if you will, with some of these needs. And, and our staff know who these people are. But also making the school available for folks just through the messages we say, hey, if you need support, please call, you know? We've had conversations as well about what we're going to do when the pandemic really reaches our region and it starts taxing our healthcare facilities. As a school district, we want to be able to support some of our, some of the, some of our parents, our nurses and doctors and, and people who work in our hospitals so we can provide some level of support as a school, be that childcare perhaps or, or just learning supports because we know mom is working twenty-hour shifts and that's, you know, math time is not going to be on her priority list. So we're, we're also talking about that as well so that we can support some of these folks that we know are going to be really putting in a lot of time to help, you know, keep people healthy and safe.
Where are we at with following, for infection prevention, following CDC guidelines for cleaning products and varnish cleaning standards? I know at MSI thirty-three, I've seen a few sanitizer dispensers with non-alcohol sanitizers. So for CDC, we need to have alcohol-based sanitizer in the facility, so can you elaborate on that?
Do you want to talk about what was discussed today with the folks?
We, those schools that don't have the alcohol sanitizer, sixty percent are better as, as is suggested. We're going to share some if we can. There is no supply right now through our current supplier. But we're not needing some in every classroom, so some schools already have a hefty supply in each classroom, so maybe we can share some of that. The schools have also purchased, those that didn't have one, foggers for each classroom. These are electrostatic foggers that actually disinfect surfaces, not just the air. And our custodial staff is on a schedule to do all the classrooms, gymnasiums, even our buses.
We did, we did Saturday cleanings.
Right.
We did that before the students were out. We'll, we'll assess whether we want to continue that as well, but really, you know, trying to beef that up as much as we can.
And we'll be doing a lot of education emphasizing the importance of handwashing, duration. So we don't have the alcohol-based product, you know, antibacterial, so for non-alcohol-based product, we'll stress the twenty seconds, the frequency and everything else. We'll do that with all ages because we can't leave it to chance, including, you know, adult staff, we'll expect them to model it.
Our nurses, our nurses were, were, were going to be printing out, there's a lot of free poster materials that are going to be, they're going to be printing out and posting throughout the, the school so that we have a lot of, you know, you know, colorful guidance on, you know, how to wash your hands the right way and that type of thing so that we're educating as much as we, as we can.
One more question about staff. If they leave, are they allowed to go on conferences and travel? What's your thoughts about that?
We're, we're not, almost everything has been canceled. I don't believe there's one thing sponsored in New England. In fact, we had a group that was supposed to go to Canada, Montreal, that's been canceled and everything's been canceled. But I don't think we'd be approving it anymore. You know, unless it's, unless it's something that's an individual project and they have to go, you know, I don't know, but no conferences, no, nothing like that.
Are you going to rely on them to state if they go somewhere since the hospital and come back and tell you that was an office?
Yep, so we've already, we've already put out memos to the staff, internal memos to that effect, that, you know, giving them guidance, if you're feeling ill, don't come to work. If you go visit this place or whatever, make sure you contact your healthcare provider and give guidance whether or not you should return to work. So have a few steps in place that they know, don't just go to China and come back. I don't think they can right now, but, you know. How are we doing, folks? So Madawaska will not approve tonight, but I would ask if you think this is a good plan, you, you approved as thirty-three and twenty-seven, you're approving the remote learning plan and the calendar adjustments as necessary.
I will need, I will definitely approve the.
Remote learning.
Remote learning plan and the calendar adjustment.
First, second by Josh.
Is there an instruction? Are questions, are there more questions? No, we're both in favor.
All in favor, three.
I'll make a motion here. I was going to, I, I'll make a motion that we support the group learning.
Calendar adjustments.
And the calendar, yeah, I mean, whatever you, whatever you need to do to make the revisions, you know, I think we need to.
Thank you. Second, second by Keith.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous there. And then Madawaska will get your approval as soon as we meet, but I think we have, Bev gave your thumbs up, Tom gave me his thumbs up, Louis did as well, so I think we have consensus that we're fine with this plan. Folks, thank you for being here tonight. I know this was a short notice and I would never do that unless it truly was an emergency. We had to have this approved, we had to share it with the state so that we have a plan in place. Like I said, it's a good plan and we're going to adjust as necessary. When I adjust it, I will send it to you to let you know what we've adjusted so that you're aware of those adjustments. If, in your conversations with folks, you know, you, you are the ones who people will sometimes go first. Feel free to send them to me. You know, I, I don't mind talking with people about their concerns, even if it's concerns about this plan, you know, and how this is going to work. And I'm going to be very honest with people. It's not perfect. I was on with the staff today, it's not perfect. And if we're striving for perfection, we're going to fail. We're going to do the best that we can and adjust accordingly and that's all we can do in this, these times that are unprecedented. We, we, you know, we've never been here before. We've never been here before and hopefully we don't have to do this again anytime soon. But thank you for your support, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, Ben. And thank your team also.
Go Jern? Yes. Go Jern? Seconded by Josh. We have a motion, Go Jern here. Thank you all. Have a good night.